Please join us in prayer.
Mr. Bauerhead. Father God, we just come to you tonight. We thank you for allowing us to be here. But we just thank you for each and every person that's in this building and in this parish. We just ask that you bless each and every one of them. Just take care of us and continue to be with us. And we just thank you, praise you for it. In Jesus' name tonight. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in pledge.
Pledge. To the states of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Secretary, can you give us a third roll call?
Ms. Odom still absent. Shirley Anderson?
Here.
Andy Bishop?
Here.
Bo Cotton? Ashley Ferguson?
Here.
Martin McDermott?
Yes.
Matthew Peterson?
Here.
Josh Oakwin?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Has everybody had the opportunity to look over tonight's agenda? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As have it. Has everybody had the opportunity to look over the April twenty-two regular meeting minutes? Make motion to approve. Sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As have it. All business. Discuss, discuss and take action on provoke, proposed private cemetery on Brown Road. Is there anybody here to speak on that?
No, leave it on table.
You want to table it again?
No, just leave it there.
Just leave it?
Yeah, just skip it.
Skip it.
They're gonna have to be.
Alright. Make recommendation concerning the rezoning of one-nine-zero-nine-nine Highway ten from A-one to C-two. I don't need a need to speak.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
We need a motion.
Move that we grant the rezoning of one-nine-zero-nine-nine Highway ten clinic from A-one to C-two.
A second. Roll call or?
Yep.
Shirley Anderson?
Yes.
Andy Bishop?
Yes.
Bo Cotton? Ashley Ferguson?
Yes.
Martin McDermott?
Yes.
Matthew Peterson?
Yes.
Josh Oakwin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Alright, that brings us to make a recommendation concerning rezoning of Colonial Drive and one-one-zero-five Longwood Drive in Jackson from C-two to R-four.
Make the recommendation, we accept it.
Thank you.
Second.
A second. Mr. Secretary?
Shirley Anderson?
Yes.
Andy Bishop?
Yes.
Bo Cotton?
Yeah.
Ashley Ferguson?
Yes.
Martin McDermott?
Yes.
Matthew Peterson?
Yes.
Josh Oakwin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Alright, that brings us to our new business. All maps have been advertised as required. Our first map is the Christie Bryant and Misty Vaughn map. Is there anybody here to represent that map?
Yes.
Jeff Moody is one of my maps. This is on just east of Slaughter before you get to Redwood Creek off of four-twelve. I don't even know if it's a name. It's a private gravel road that goes north. And the south property line of this property is the north town limit line to Slaughter. So you're going right back into the parish beyond the other dirt there. So this is family property. So you got two sisters here, Kristen Bryant and Misty Vaughn. Misty and her husband live, live in that lot seven. There's a mobile home on that lot. And Kristen and her husband live down there on Lot B on the southern end of it. And their mom and dad living at mobile home that's on that lot one B. They formed a, a family LLC when they bought this property. And we originally did this, those five lots, lots two, three, four, five and six, they've got five children. One of them has two and the other have three. And then there was two one acre lots, lot seven and lot eight. That's what we done for them when they bought this property. And what they're trying to do now, I believe, they want to take it out of the LLC. And they're gonna put lot one A into Misty's name and lot one B into Kristen's name. And Kristen and her husband who owned that lot eight. We cut it in the middle. And I believe that, uh, lot eight A that it joins lot seven, they're gonna do the conveyance of title that Stephen and Misty and her husband own that tract just so. And their, their children are small, I think. I think they're young children, but they're doing all this in the hopes that this is their forever home and their kids, you know, trying to lay out the lots for their children and whatnot. And the only reason for the lot one A and lot one B, like I said, right now is I think they're gonna take it back out of the LLC and put it in the two girls' individual names. And, uh, they've since bought, like I said, that lot B and that three acre lot at the bottom. So they own all of that out there now. And, uh, so all we're creating by this map is lot one A and lot one B. And we sold about it lot A into two tracts. And it's just trying to accommodate whatever it is they have in mind they're trying to do out there with their family and put the title in, you know, individual names back out of LLC, understand?
So. So I just have a question amongst us, I guess. Does family division follow with, uh, in LLCs and companies?
Yes. Does it current?
Yep. Southern border of this is Fort Flair?
No, the southern border of this is the north town line to Slaughter. It's that pri- it's a private gravel road. I don't even know what's got the name, does it do?
I think it's over to.
Right before you get to Redwood Creek, when you cross the fort.
It's right from Ross.
Come back towards Slaughter.
Right from Ross Maney's house.
Those Wolfos. He's got a fab shop back here. I forget what it's called. Florida Wolfos.
Back right corner. It's initials.
Is it in there or something?
No. W, WMR? Maybe?
Oh, I see.
Something like that.
If you look at that little vicinity, man, we can't see where it's at.
So majority of these maps, two, three, four, five, six and seven already been separated out?
Yes.
Previously?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight already existed. And then that lot one A, one B was lot one, one B lot. It already existed.
We divided this about two years ago.
The thing you're about, two A and eight B? Is that the dude?
Eight A.
Eight A and eight B, then we're taking lot one and making one A and one B.
So you're taking all of this.
Basically what they want to do, they want to take the whole piece of pie and make two equal pieces. And then they divided that lot eight because of, it was next to the lot seven and how they may give to the children they come of age or whatever they're gonna do.
Close of public hearing.
Got close of public hearing? Anybody else here to speak on this? Close of public hearing? Recommendation? Who was? Chris Bishop? Me, Shirley?
Put these maps together so we don't have a problem signing them when we finish tonight.
Uh, Mr. Secretary?
Shirley Anderson? Andy Bishop?
Yes.
Bo Cotton?
Yeah.
Ashley Ferguson?
Yes.
Martin McDermott?
Yes.
Matthew Peterson?
Yes.
Josh Oakwin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you. That brings us to the Jones and Gwendolyn Beal map. Is there anybody here to represent this map?
Yeah.
Take the podium, give a brief explanation of what's going on and introduce yourself. Did you write one? Please introduce yourself and give a brief thought explanation of what's going on.
I had, uh, had to talk to the head off. And what happened is they had, you know, a nine point, nine point, uh, ten acres of the add track. And off the lane, it would come in right here, the, off of lot B. So two point two five acres, that's part of, that's the brothers right there. And from the, uh, the other seventy-five percent is both of the fifty percent of mine, the other twenty-five percent, I'm not sure what, what going on there. But it's the golfing lane though.
So create, we're creating two lots out of it, is what we're doing. So. Uh, you have the front lot that's two point two five acres, correct? And then the back lot is?
Two point two five acres, that's, that's the brothers.
That's.
The, the, the four, the four pieces of, that was the bar in it. Uh, one of the persons I bought some was the, uh, which, uh, among the fifty percent of this, of that five percent right here.
Okay, so there's, there's multiple owners in this property?
Well, the four five percent, I'm not sure what, what happened with that.
Okay.
Uh.
So if, if there's multiple owners in a property?
Yeah.
We, uh. Are we asking for signatures from the owners on the maps? So, um, we need ownership to be represented on the map to know that everybody's in for, for the value of the property.
The top problem with, the tax had been paid in the past thirty years.
Had it not been paid? Or has been paid? Which that doesn't really matter to us, but as far as our divisions, whoever has the ownership of the property has to be able to, has to sign the map. So if it's four owners on this map, we need to see four sets of signatures and everybody agrees to have the division done. But also something that's going on here as well, it appears that we're landlocking a piece of property with no access to it. Do y'all see it?
Yeah.
What I'm saying?
No servitude.
No servitude to it. So, um, and if you want to stay, we have quite a few more to go too. We can speak to you a little bit afterwards and talk to you what needs to be done. But if there's multiple owners in the property, we definitely need to have their representation on the prop- on the map.
So.
There's not much we can do. We can table it to see. Sir?
You tried to get a map, you know, no good.
Well, I'm not gonna say this.
It needs modifications.
But they need some more work to it. Yes. It needs a little bit more going on with.
Hang around, we'll get.
If you wanna hang around, one of us.
We'll, we'll ink it up for you so you can take it back to Mr. Stain Romine and have him fix it.
We'll get you straight here in just a little while. Thank you so much.
Hang on to that one. Hang on to that one, we'll fix it.
Do you need motion to table?
Motion to table. Matthew?
I move, we table this map?
A second.
Uh, that's a, that's a gavel, right?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As have it.
Leave it there, we'll, we'll go over in a minute. No, you can keep it. Hang on to it. That way you got one to take back to it.
Just, just hang tight for a few minutes. We'll talk to you when we get to the other ones right quick. Alright, that brings us to the David and Lydia. Reiners. At the, at the Carruth Place map? I'm sorry. Is there anybody here to represent this map?
Yeah, Jeff Moody is double now. So this is on Carruth Road, just east of Wilson before you get to Comey River. And, uh, David and his wife Lydia are already on this three point oh five acre tract. And they're just trying to get another eight acres, that L-shaped piece, cut out of the Carruth Place property. I don't know if y'all knew about the answer to Carruth, but he used to live in that house on the three point oh five acres. So we're just cutting out the eight acre tract so the, uh, Reiners can buy it. And it's real straightforward, it's got two hundred forty somebody put a front on Carruth Road. So it's coming out of a big piece of like two hundred sixty-seven acre tract that it's coming out of. So it's gonna leave two hundred fifty and a half point nine five acres in that Lawrence tract after we cut out that eight acres.
Uh, do we? So have they purchased this yet or is this waiting for purchase?
Eight acres?
Yes.
No, not until all this is been recorded and stuff.
Kind of same conversation on last map. Do we need the signature of the owner of that property?
They've not transferred hands yet.
Not transferred hands, okay, alright.
That'd be an act of sale later on.
Okay. Alright, um, is there anybody else here to speak on this map? Close public hearing?
Make motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Secretary?
Shirley Anderson?
Yes.
Andy Bishop?
Yes.
Bo Cotton? Ashley Ferguson?
Yes.
Martin McDermott?
Yes.
Matthew Peterson?
Yes.
Josh Oakwin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Alright, uh, next. Might be halfway organized today. Alright, that brings us to Joshua DeLee, Matt. Is there anybody here to represent that map? Jay Arm, I'm abstaining from this.
There it's been, sir there. Uh, yeah, Mr. DeLee just needed to cut out a couple acres around his existing house for certain reasons. What will we do? Cut out tract A two. Get out with, uh, one hundred and ninety-three feet of road front.
It's on a gravel. It's on a gravel drive, a servicey drive.
Yeah, there's an existing, that's what you do.
Is there anybody else here to speak on this map? Let's close the public hearing.
Move to accept the map?
Second.
Mr. Secretary?
Shirley Anderson?
Yes.
Andy Bishop?
Yes.
Bo Cotton? Ashley Ferguson?
Yes.
Martin McDermott?
Yes.
Matthew Peterson?
Yes.
Josh Oakwin?
Staying.
Okay. Matt Fassas?
Uh, yes, Mr. Fassas.
Alright, that brings us to the Deborah Riquin, Riquin map. Is there anybody here to represent that map? Please introduce yourself and give us a brief, brief explanation, please.
I have a map, I have one on route. I got the copies.
Yes.
Always find a journal.
Please introduce yourself.
I'm Wayne Riquin.
Yes, sir.
Riquin, I tell you, cuz. There is Riquin, cuz. And, uh, this is part of the land that we inherited from Lester Ray Smith, who passed away. And, uh, we're trying to se- separate an acre from this land that we inherited, which is part of the, from the dirt core. It's a one point zero 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 six acre. We're just trying to put it with the house for a title. And, uh, we may sell it later when we have a buyer interested in it, but we, the law hasn't been approved yet. So all we're trying to do is in the future, just put this acre, one point zero zero six acre with that house. I think it's eight one forty address.
But.
We own property, Debbie owns some property she inherited. And it's right next to our place, eight one twenty-eight Smith Lane. But it's an old Smith Lane.
Yes.
We're just trying to get it approved so we can, uh, split it in a bit of dirt.
Alright, is there anybody else here to speak on this? Let's close public hearing. I do recommend that.
Yes.
Second. Mr. Secretary?
Shirley Anderson?
Yes.
Andy Bishop?
Yes.
Bo Cotton? Ashley Ferguson?
Yes.
Martin McDermott?
Yes.
Matthew Peterson?
Yes.
Josh Oakwin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
After the first Monday in June.
First Monday, after the first Monday.
Yeah, the police jury's last signature.
Thanks so much. Alright, that brings us to Mears Property LLC. Is there anybody here to represent that map? Ma'am, please introduce yourself and give us a brief explanation.
My name is Debbie Bryan. I am co-owner of this property. Uh, this is part of a tract of land, nine, about ninety acres that my parents, um, this was their forever home for over fifteen years. They both deceased last year. The two pieces that we are selling were open properties that were leased or had. And, uh, we have a buyer for each, and so we're selling these pieces.
Is there anybody else to speak on this map?
It's already been sold. Part of the records has already been sold.
Sold already. Sale's gone through already.
That's what the assessors office says, it's already been sold.
It's a different piece.
Oh, okay, it's a different one with your assessment. Well, D, D one was sold to these. Okay.
Alright, okay, correct. Is there anybody else here to speak on this map? Let's close the public hearing.
Move to accept the map?
Second. Mr. Secretary?
Shirley Anderson?
Yes.
Andy Bishop?
Yes.
Bo Cotton?
Yeah.
Ashley Ferguson?
Yes.
Martin McDermott?
Yes.
Matthew Peterson? Josh Oakwin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, that brings us to the Michael and Leslie Lofton and Chris Knox map. Is there anybody here to represent that map?
Good afternoon, my name is Chris Knox. I bought the D-one tract two weeks ago from Michael and Leslie. This tract, uh, is the rear portion behind that. There's a thirty foot strip to the north to access the existing, uh, servitude access. And then the strip to the east or towards Lemon Road. It's just a little strip to make sure that the whole driveway and the trees that were planted on the property were with that parcel. Tell, what are you trying?
Yeah, I'm missing something.
What is?
Explain yourself again.
So the intent was to buy all of part of land between D-one and Redwood Creek to the west, the western boundary. To not landlock it, put a thirty foot, uh, strip to the north so you can get to it from the existing driveway servitude. I never intend to sell it, I intend to die here. But just for the planning and zoning that has that. And then the offset twenty-five feet to the east towards Lemon Road was to take in the entire driv- existing driveway and the trees that were planted around the D-one tract.
So.
Which is Jones D-one?
I own D-one.
Kinda, but they, all this Jones D-one?
Well, when you really looked at it, most of the trees were a little off of it. That's why you can just, just pull it all in so that, uh, the trees.
And you're D-one?
Yes.
You're D-one, okay. So.
Servitude already goes to D-one? Yes, sir.
And the intent is to purchase D-three, is that where we headed to?
Yes.
You're gonna, you're gonna purchase D?
D-one and D-three, the whole contiguous piece.
Okay.
That, that's.
Okay, so that, that helps us with this map was kind of.
Yeah, no, this will all be contiguous with D.
Okay.
After it gets approved, I'll, when I'm closed, we'll say all.
And the drive coming in there is curved, that is actual property line on D-one?
I do not know that.
That's the map we just approved. That's the one we go back to. That's being done. Yeah, so that's why it's kind of, this stuff is blending a little bit right here is what it's getting to almost. Yeah, so it will be, that will be the property line. Is that? They just serve it to you.
It's gonna be D-five there.
Yep. That helps it make a little more sense right there. Yeah, okay. Okay. Is there anybody else here to speak on this map? Let's close the public hearing.
Make a motion to approve it.
A second. Mr. Secretary?
Shirley Anderson?
Yes.
Andy Bishop?
Yes.
Bo Cotton? Ashley Ferguson?
Yes.
Martin McDermott?
Yes.
Matthew Peterson?
Yes.
Josh Oakwin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Alright, that brings us to the Terry Lumpkin, um, map. Is there anybody here to represent that map? Please introduce yourself and give a brief. Ooh, here we go again. Sorry, sir.
He said, here we go again.
I said, here we go again. So let's see what we got going on.
It's okay. We're used to it.
So right here in the middle.
This is, uh, track three and Q-one, is that a book cover?
Yes. Yes. So currently, uh, Murray owns that section right there. Okay. Is there anybody else here to speak on this map? Let's close the public hearing. Yes. So is there any structures on our property right now or is it just vacant? It's a dark one, over to the right center, muffled bit right there.
Oh, okay.
This is about the far property LLC?
No.
This is, this has been, Murray's been chopping this up to such an extent that this is.
Four light rule was blown on this so long ago, you're not old enough to remember when it started.
He's saying the car owner's selling it to.
Yes.
No property LLC?
Mr. Cherry, have you purchased the property already? We, we can explain after the.
Motion to approve it? Second.
Who's the second? Matthew.
Secretary?
Shirley Anderson?
Yes.
Andy Bishop?
Yes.
Bo Cotton? Ashley Ferguson?
Yes.
Matt, uh, Martin McDermott?
Yes.
Matthew Peterson?
Yes.
Josh Oakwin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
I need a copy of it.
It'll be after it's all signed and everything and after the jury approves at the first meeting in May. I mean, June, then they'll be able to get it and record it. And the assessors will get a copy after it's recorded. No, after the police jury meeting the first of June. That Monday, first Monday in June. Nikki will. She'll let you know.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Alright, uh, that brings us to our maps considered under administrative procedures. Uh, that brings us Anita Chaney map, is there anybody here to represent that map?
Anita Chaney.
Yes, ma'am.
I am wanting to separate just a property that my name has a true law on. It's gonna stay in my name, it's just gonna be separate from my name's.
Okay. Anybody else here to speak on this map? Let's close the public hearing. Not one. Not one? Close.
I'm moving, except.
Where we have public hearing, we, we still have votes, I don't know.
Yeah, we're, roll call, both of them. Second. I got a march.
Second.
Shirley Anderson.
Yes.
Andy Bishop.
Yes.
Bo Cotton.
Yep.
Ashley Ferguson.
Yes.
Martin McDermott.
Yes.
Matthew Peterson.
Yes.
Josh Oakwin.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Much. Alright, that brings us to the Richard Brindley map, is there anybody here to represent this map?
We recently, uh, last year, we were just lots four and five, just north of, uh, ten there in, uh, Jackson. And, uh, my wife decided she wanted to build a house right between the two lots, right in the middle, so, uh, here I am trying to marry the two lots.
They do that all the time, right?
That's the best explanation we have heard tonight yet. If you ride home tonight by yourself.
You should've wore gray, though.
So we're just removing a lot line, folks, so.
Yeah. We're moving a lot. That's the least complicated explanation. Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
Can I get a recommendation?
I, I move to accept the map.
Mr. Secretary.
Shirley Anderson.
Yes.
Andy Bishop.
Yes.
Bo Cotton. Ashley Ferguson.
Yes.
Martin McDermott.
Yes.
Matthew Peterson.
Yes.
Josh Oakwin.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all for your time.
Uh, that brings us to Mr. Tommy Dudley's map.
I'm older.
Is there anybody here to represent that map?
Yeah.
Y'all may wanna see this.
Thank you. Let's get ready to change title.
I'm donating a piece of property to my granddaughter. Now that my place is built in my home, and that's the, doctor manager's getting recognition, and that didn't record until it's approved. Over the piece of property.
So.
Y'all have the map.
Four into four A and four B. What's being done under family today?
Mr. Dudley, you're not looking for more grandkids, are you? You're not, you're not wanting any more grandkids, are you?
She's carrying number nineteen.
Wow.
And it's a boy.
Can I, get a recommendation?
Second.
We did first.
Just Andy.
Shirley Anderson.
Yes.
Andy Bishop.
Yes.
Bo Cotton.
Yep.
Ashley Ferguson.
Yes.
Martin McDermott.
Yes.
Matthew Peterson.
Yes.
Josh Oakwin.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sir.
Wait till after June the first.
Yep.
Yeah, it's the first week, yeah, give him a few days afterwards. Alright, um, that brings us to other. Uh, review zoning for one, three, four, four, three, um, and five highway ten east Clinton. And make a recommendation to the police jury, is there anybody here to speak on that?
Yep.
I want the floor after that.
And the same.
Yeah.
Jerry and Michael Sebastian.
Thank you.
Uh, we're here because of the ordinance that the police jury voted on in December two thousand twenty-four, I believe. Uh, it didn't go outside their, all, this building when they did it, so nothing was declared. The ordinance read that if it was shut down for six months, it's a little convoluted how it says. But what y'all are standing is because the business was not ongoing, y'all are stripping us out of C two. But, nowhere in the clerk's office, in this office, in every, any office in this exclusive in the parish does it say that we're not C two. So we bought it at C two, we got a commercial loan for C two, we got a, a C two appraisal. Everything costs more when it's commercial, which I'm sure, we gave full price because it's commercial. Uh, I'd say six weeks into owning it, we were told we're no longer C two. There was other places that were within these guidelines that were not, it was not enforced. And that is our brief, is that are we or are we not C two? Why are we being enforced and others aren't? And what do we do from this time forward?
And, and if you don't mind, and make a recommendation to the police jury, I'm confused about that.
Well, they're sending us back to the police jury.
They have, they do the final, they have the final say, we make a recommendation for zoning matters.
It's gotta start, that's.
I do have one question, what y'all doing out there?
We're not doing it, we're trying to.
No, I'm talking, I know, I'm talking about the plane, the plane. Well, I know that, I already know that, I pass it three times a day, at least.
But, you know, we're asking, the ordinance is not enforced.
So, if it followed, if it would've followed the rules.
By size, it would be A two. Power's never been off to it, water's never been off to it. My take on this, and the jury could've handled it at the last meeting, all they needed to do was grant a variance to that six month reversion, because unfortunately Roy Walton died, he worked in the building until a man dropped dead. And then to get everything settled and get it turned over to them took longer than six months. So, I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the jury that they grant a variance for the six month roll away and maintain C two on the property. And that's a motion.
Now, with that being said, I talked to Sam previous to that, and I told him I was asking for a variance. But then he turned around and said, I have to ask for a permit, get refused, then ask for a variance. There's no permit to be asked for, so.
I heard all that, I was at that meeting.
So, did we erase that part, and, and look, I'm with you. I just don't wanna leave here today and tell something different, yeah.
So, so Roy worked in the building on equipment until he passed, basically, to me, shortly in time. Um, power never got shut off, pro- property went for sale within a few months of the time he passed away, I would imagine, right?
Yeah, I had it lea- I had it for sale for years, under commercial with a big old commercial sign out there. I'm so glad I didn't sell it to someone else, 'cause I could get sued right now. And everywhere you called, it said C two, the map said C two, everything said C two, and that was our biggest thing. It's, regardless, we have no say on what the jury brings in as an ordinance, but it was never enforced, it was never stepped outside this building. No government entity knew about this.
Uh, I second Joe's motion to grant a variance.
Just leave it as C two.
Yes.
Just leave it.
That's what the long, that's what the long and the short of it is.
Or in the system, it's still C two, isn't it?
Correct.
C two on that.
Yes, so it'll just be a, a vote to reflect the reality of what's, what's out there in the world, right?
Right, this is what, this is the map that our appraiser got off the clerk's website, C two.
Nikki, where's the map, the official's zoning map now, posted in here? Here it is, right? No, the official, there's a, there's a four by five foot map, used to be on that front wall over there. That one here. Is that the bigger half that was on there? That's another one that was.
This is the old one, because know what, there's not been another one made, to my knowledge.
And a lot of things have changed in the parish, in the whole of the parish, so, stuff, sometimes things were recorded wrong, sometimes things were recorded right. The fact that the matter comes in, that they performed business in there, he was still running as a mechanic shop, operated his bar, then it was a mechanic shop till Roy worked till almost the time he died, you know? So, I mean, that's, that's where the fact that the matter sits, um, nothing was ever changed, nothing was ever reverted, so it didn't leave from here, so.
No, the truck was parked out front.
Yeah, when he died.
Till they moved.
And there was a lot parked inside.
Changed in that building, only outside. I will tell you, Dudley, on this one, I'll never do this again. I know, there was everything. I didn't know what you did. Everything was the way it sat for thirty years.
Okay.
Except a lot more.
A lot, he worked in the building, so.
You got a motion.
Alright, we got a motion to the second.
What is that? That's gas. To just recommend to the police jury not to change it from C two?
When they're recommending grant a variance for the six month rollback from C two to R one, it's gonna remain C two. And they can continue on.
On the fact that work continued in that building till the building went up for sale, it did, it never, the building did not cease to.
All the utilities stayed on.
Is it even, that's my question, is it even a variance?
It's a variance 'cause it's over six months, and that's the way the jury interpreted.
Right, so, but with it going on for sale, right after, I mean, it wasn't two months, three months after he passed away, the building went for sale. So it went for sale as a commercial property, it never lost that intent, so. Alright.
Let's vote.
Alright, y'all ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
All in favor?
Ah.
Opposed? As have it.
Thank goodness.
That brings us to a review rezoning package for three ninety-two highway four oh nine. Please introduce yourself and let us know what's going on.
My name is, uh, Dr. Tony Laboue, I'm, uh, carved out one point five seven acres, uh, off of a, a large tract, I think it's M three. Um, and build a veterinary clinic.
Do we have maps to?
Yeah, should, should have. Here's.
You building a new structure?
I am, it's a thirty by fifty, uh, building that would, uh, accommodate to not have any outdoor channels, no, no outdoor channels. I'm, uh, I own the veterinary clinic about, about forty-seven years now, so, been down the road a little bit, and, uh, this is just, uh, kinda paint my hat on a little bit. Don't know where it's gonna go, but I'm gonna open up a, uh, veterinary clinic so I can have something to, uh. And I'll probably eventually move out on that property, that's my, my life.
That's the last two letters. Where's highway four?
Four oh nine, right, it's going, uh, right to Mill Creek. Living right in front of Blairstown. Bob Jones Road.
It goes about halfway down that road and splits.
It's parish. Parish splits on that road.
Yep. No, we, we have some, uh, we have relationship with the Doris.
You know where the old, um, the wine place was?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, um, let's set the public hearing before our next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we'll do it five forty-five, yep.
How much are you carving that?
Uh, how much I'm carving now, one point five seven acres.
About three hundred and twenty something acres.
What would that be, C?
Yeah, it's going from A to C two, C two.
Alright, so what date will that be for next meeting day? Fourth.
June twenty-fourth, four, two, twenty-fourth.
Yep, so we'll set a public hearing at five forty-five on June twenty-fourth.
Yep.
And the parish will get with you and put a sign out.
And.
Go from there, okay.
That one eight, that one point five is, it's gonna have, uh, access to four oh nine?
Yes, it's right on, right on the. I think, uh, drive around two forty, two hundred forty feet. And it will have nice.
Simple enough, that's it. Alright, uh, police jury, Miss Nikki, do you have anything to talk about?
I don't.
Alright. Legal advisor, we don't have our legal advisor present, um, public comment, is there anybody else here who has anything to speak on?
Move to adjourn. Second.
Alright, that brings us to Sharon.
Move to adjourn, I second.
Second.
I got it.
All in favor?
I won't stay.
Not eating the germ. Okay.
Stay away from the, we just need to stay away from the.
Murray thanks. You, you need to ride out there with me.
We should have six matches.
Have Saint Remin, put the other, the original four land owners, have their signatures here. And that way.